Mrs. Denny?
Here.
Mrs. Ellis?
Here.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Mansonelli?
Here.
Mr. Seesaw?
Here.
Mr. Tinsley? Mr. Twissler?
Here.
Mr. Arm?
Here.
On the 2.01 is approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the March 22 board meeting and April 19 special board meeting. Go ahead and smoke.
Two more. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.02 is invoice listing. Motion to approve the invoice listing of March through April of 2023. Go ahead and smoke.
Seven.
Clear. Question or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.03 is the treasurer's report. So.
As of February 28, 2023, Pendelco's balance was $40,671,163. During March 2023, local, state, and federal revenues totaled $3,264,6582. Disimbursements were issued in the amount of $6,342,720,000. As of March 31, 2023, Pendelco's current balance is $36,975,250. Sorry. Why can't I get that number right? Sorry. Sorry. Oh, my gosh. I'm so sorry, guys.
Very tax.
$36,975,250 is messing up. Thank you. This is the first time.
This is for sprinters. Motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Motion is to approve the treasurer's report from March 23.
Go ahead and smoke.
Do I have this motion?
Go ahead and smoke.
Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.04 is the budget transfer report. Motion to approve the budget transfer report from March through April of 2023. Go ahead and smoke.
Two more.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Student representative has reported to the board. Sophia?
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you all again. I'm going to start off with the blood drive that we had. That was on March 30, and that was ran by our school student senate. We paired with the American Red Cross and Mr. Malaterry, and I ran it. We had roughly 200 people sign up and about 150 actually donate. And we actually ran out of spots. It was that field, which was very successful. And it was the first blood drive we had since 2021, so it was great. The day after, we had our spring prep rallies. We had like egg hunt, water room, Osprey League races, stuff like that. And that was just to get people ready for spring break. And then the spring break happened, and that was a good solid 10 days for students to get themselves together. And then we had the Sun Valley Band Concert on April 13th, and it was a huge success. The music was very good, and the turnout was amazing. This past week, we had mock interviews for the seniors. We had a wide variety of people come from various professions to come and interview students, and they were graded on our interviewing skills. I got 100, so that was very helpful. And I had Mr. Coglin. This past Friday, the juniors had their junior prom at Camden Aquarium. Everyone had a great time, and everyone got home safe, which was important. NOCTI has started for the technical school kids. So my class had our skills-based one this past Friday, and then we have our computerized this upcoming Friday. The fourth marking period has started, so students are nearing the end of our school year. Students are encouraged to finish strong, keep up with their classes. So graduation's coming up soon. That's June 6. And then seniors are also getting ready for their Disney trip on May 18 through 22nd and March prom on May 12th. And commitment day will be the day of prom, and students, I think, put in their commitments schools on April 25th, so please go.
A question for you. I mentioned that you participated in mock interviews, and I was so impressed with the students that I had a chance to interview. All the people who participated, they provide feedback, which I know you guys get. Tell us from a student's perspective, is there anything that we could do differently to make that experience better for you? What did you like about it? Eh, what made you nervous? Tell us. Curious to say?
I think everyone's pretty prepared, and I think everyone did a really great job. I just think that, I think we should encourage the students to ask more questions about the interviewee profession and what they do, because I don't, I didn't have a chance to ask any questions. I think that's a really important point, to try and get to know the person who's actually interviewing you as well. And then I think a couple of people that I spoke with, they weren't asked personal questions about themselves or about the stuff that they do outside of school. So I thought that kind of going off the script was not asking more in-depth questions.
Was the feedback helpful for you?
Yes.
That you got from your juniors?
Yes.
It was good to see that that is back in action now. Taking a little COVID sabbatical there for a little. Well, it was an exciting time of year for you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Tommy?
There is no DCIU report. Channel 5, Dr. Stone, also.
Well, good evening, everybody who was in attendance. I will present this from the floor again, as we have a few things to talk about. First of all, to our board members, as you know, some months our teachers association have teacher representatives come out to learn more about the district and to support the district. Tonight, we have guests from Sun Valley, so thank you for being here tonight. Good to see you. Tonight's agenda, we have some big items, certainly. The proposed final budget. Those who are tuning into the tape of this presentation tonight, or those who were attendants last week at our study session, which was held in North Middle School, the entire, the school board received their complete and entire proposed final budget presentation. So tonight, it'll be a little bit shorter, but all the information is available to the board to vote on the proposed final budget for the next fiscal year. We had some questions with our change of full day gag, where we continue to offer before or after care in our schools. And we do intend to do that. There's been a lot of satisfaction with our current provider, today's child, you know, and we are going to continue to recommend that we move forward, that they'll be able to offer before and after care at our schools. One of the extended day, obviously, because kindergarten kids will now be with us for the full day. And we also have a fund transfer on the agenda for $1.5 million. I point that out because of the exceptional financial stewardship by our business office and by the decisions that we make that enable us to move $1.5 million into a capital reserve fund to ensure that the kind of projects that we have to continue to do, something like the project that's happening on this roof right now, will always be able to be funded. We had our S and P ratings call, and once again, we had an extremely high rating, which was a double A. We're really pleased to see that that has not changed and that our financial status in Pendelco continues to be very, very strong. I would also point out that because of close management of our projects, tonight, we'll be asking for you to approve a change order that does not cost the district money, but instead brings money back in the form of a credit. Proposed final budget, again, for some of the board members will see some of these slides that we went over last year, I'm sorry, last week, similar style we've done, certainly the last couple of years for sure. But on May 1st, we effectively notified of the amount of our state allocation of property tax reduction funding. We will have a final budget presentation. June 21 enables us to do a final budget adoption, which will enable the business office to prepare the tax bills so that they can go out in time for July 1. The proposed final budget right now, it is another budget that is again below the Act 1 index that the state assigns to Pendelco as a taxing percentage. So yet again, we will come in with a proposed increase that's below the Act 1 index, and middleage will be 19.1263. Our expenditures tick up to $71 million, which still remains the lowest average per student expenditures in Delaware County. So it's important that we can stay true to our students and keep in line with the other districts in the county that are raising taxes, that are increasing the amount of expenditures on their students. We want to make sure that our students are getting exceptional experiences in our district. An item that business managers not really focus on is what percentage of the budget goes towards instruction. And when I started here back in '08, that number was actually in the 40s. And we have consistently tried to move more funding into instruction. And when we talk about instruction, that's teacher salaries, that's materials, that's programs, that's technology, same thing for student services. So if we can help students, that's where we want to spend our money. You'll see what the lion's share of our expenses, right? It's the blue piece, and it's the orange piece. Benefits and salaries. A lot of people don't realize, you know, they hear about the teacher salary, but they don't see the other side to that, which is the health benefits costs and then P's, which the pension requires for the district to pay almost over a third of a person's salary into pensions on top of the contributions that the teachers themselves and the employees themselves are making as well. The actual budget line, we're looking at 3.4% change in salaries. Benefits, because of our work with the healthcare consortium, we were very beneficial in this area, were able to hold the benefit costs down, so we have a little bit of a change there. Modest increases, some changes in how we categorize equipment. If you look at that, it looks like an enormous increase. However, the dollar amount in itself is not that number. So debt service will see is still a high number for us. It's an area we're working on, but we can manage debt, and it includes $400,000 in our budgetary reserve. We talked about the pension. I mean, this is the bottom line here. This is our challenge, right? Back in '08, the schools just had to pay $1.6 million for our employer contributions. We're now at $10.6 million, because that's the mandated cost that the state passes along to the school district. Charter school tuition, I mean, look at this unsustainable increase in charter school tuition. We're budgeting about $1.5 million in charter school tuition next year. Almost, that's 80% of that is going to cyber charters. And we have talked very, very often on the need for cyber charter reform. There's a reason why 470 school districts in Pennsylvania are calling for relief, because it's outrageous that our taxpayers are paying this amount of money for students to stay in their bedroom with no fixed costs of running a school district. So if a student is in cyber charter school, they're on the other side of a computer screen, never have to leave their house, there's no cost, there's no athletics, there's no cafeteria, there's no transportations, there is just no fixed costs that school districts have when you're running a cyber charter school. But when you look at that increase, that reflects almost about 70% of all of the total income that we will receive in a property tax increase next year. Will just go to charter school tuition. Our revenue primarily from local sources. There used to be a time when the state paid for 50% of the cost of schools. That's now down to 27%. So who has to pick up the cost? Our local taxpayers. Median homestead assessment in this district, $211,000. Homes are selling for good prices. This is a desirable place to come to. People want to come to Pendelco, so we're happy with that. And that's definitely from the assessment, but for tax purposes, median assessment 211 995. That translates to an annual cost of tax payer of $4,054 or an average increase of $189 a year. Here you'll see our historic mileage rate increases. When the Act 1 index was low, we kept it low, right? We never asked for exceptions. We stayed in that 2% range, 2% range. But now inflation's hitting school districts in the same way. It's hitting all other businesses. So you'll see the Act 1 index has ticked up from 2.2% back in 2015 to about 5% now. We're going to come in below that 5%. So we're looking at total revenues of just over $70 million. Now expenditures, $71.7 million. At this point in time, the budget reflects a deficit of $906,000, which we do not want to cut programs. We do not want to cut teaching positions just to get to the point where we can have those two numbers match, and we can manage this budget as it currently stands. That's where we are on the budget. Happy to mention Norkeley redesignation. We, as you know, were informed that they received a third redesignation as a school to watch after we had a visit by outside experts from the National Farm that came in in October. Really pleased. They are going to be coming to Norkeley in early June to do an official presentation. Only 37 schools received at the State senate of Pennsylvania. Only 10 were re-designated for a third time. Schools to watch, very impressive. It was recognized at Norkeley because they have inclusive and welcoming atmosphere. They have zero tolerance for bullying. We were told they have an exceptional special education program, great academic focus, a conducive climate to supporting students during these very difficult developmental years as they struggle to get through middle school. So really pleased with that staff, the kids in that building, and the folks who put forth the work to get this designation from a group outside of the school. It's easy for me to pay a compliment to them. When an expert comes in and says he's got a great program here, it really gives the staff and the students reasons to feel proud. Very happy to see this year, safe to say anonymous tip line has been very helpful for us. I've been extremely impressed with the maturity with which the students in Pendelco have used this tip line tool. Really proud. What happens is when a tip goes through about a threat, concern, that gets processed at Harrisburg. Information comes back to the principals, to the administrators, to Dr. Kamek, to myself, to local law enforcement, and allows us to take actions if there's a life safety tip or if there is an action that may happen. So in some places, kids kind of, they joke around with it, and I just have not seen that here in Pendelco. I've been really proud the way that our secondary students have made use of that tip line. If they're concerned about friends, if they saw something online that they think people should be aware of, even just, you know, kids vaping or concerns that maybe they have an eating disorder, kids speaking out and doing something so that we can help kids and work with their parents and make sure that they're doing well. Now, other tools besides S and S that we have in place, you know, S and S is one proponent. You know, the PBIS programs we have, Core Central Character Programs, Choose to Be Nice Character Program, always completing the bullying and the threat assessments whenever they get reported. Of course, enforcing code of conduct, because actions have to have consequences, and we pair that with restorative practices. School counseling services, then collaboration, cooperation with the law enforcement agencies. And this year, we're going to continue to recommend Lakeside Mental Health Services. They have been available for students who have extreme mental health needs and can serve as additional support for parents. Kindergarten orientation, huge success, great record turnout for our parent orientation events. We want to thank Dr. Murray for that. Families who aren't able to attend that can access the presentation at pdsd.org/k registration. So we just remind parents to please finish the registration work with the paperwork. We're really happy with the excitement of a full-day kindergarten in Pendelco come September. PS and S tests have begun. As you know, we don't overdo the push about test scores around here. We know that a child is more than a test score. But what we are saying, having to be forced to deliver the PS and S every year, is that if there is a bright side to testment, is that in a low-stakes environment, it does help students develop test-taking skills that they're going to need later in life. So we're glad that so many students are trying their best. You know, a lot of students are going to have to take the SATs, they're going to have to take the NOCTI if they want to be a teacher. They have to pass teaching certification tests. If they want to be a nurse, they have to pass tests. If they want to be a police officer, they have to pass tests. So taking the PS and S helps kids get stamina to say, I can do this. Let me just give it my best, we'll see what happens. And we've been proud of the way our students have embraced it so far. Really excited with what we've been doing with students, two students. We had Sun Valley freshman meeting with eighth graders to discuss the transition from middle to high school. About a great day to host some students up from North Middle School. Really excited to have Sun Valley grads come back and talk to North Middle School. We had students from Swarthmore, University of Pennsylvania, Temple University, Benny Ganzlo and his teammates from that record-setting Swarthmore basketball team came out to talk to students and talk about getting ready for college, getting ready for workforce, and just how to grow up and be mature and be a success. The mock interviews that we talked about, 23 professionals and administrators from around the area came out, interviewed the entire senior class to prepare them for future career opportunities. What a nice perk for kids at Sun Valley, where when they go to an interview, it won't be the first time that they ever sat to talk to a stranger about their resume and about their plans. Evelyn Chee made it into All-State Honors Musable Ensemble. She performed the second-chair flute in the Wind Ensemble. Really impressed again with the large program. We talk about service. Sun Valley students this year, the atmosphere's been excellent. We're very pleased to see kids step up. The Red Cross had a hard time handling the overwhelming response by our students that were ready to donate blood last month at Sun Valley. I saw this on the social media this week. The Sun Valley Track Team did a running fundraiser with money that was put towards the autism challenge that's run by the Philadelphia Eagles. But what really stood out to me was, like, look at this team. This team used to be small, didn't have a lot of students involved, and the coaches and kids are doing an incredible job, and I just see that program going somewhere, and we know it's great for developing your character. Alana Katka, congratulations, 100th gold this week for Sun Valley girls across team, and Daniel Assamoah, school record in the track and field in the triple jump, 43 feet and 10 inches. So congratulations to him as well. A school record is a big accomplishment. So a lot of, great year for athletics at Sun Valley, great year for academics, great year for activities as well. Four of 14 honorees, first team all-Delco wrestling, are from Sun Valley. Extremely impressive. Congratulations to the chessman champion athletes as well. And we had band fest. It was my pleasure to really speak to people from around the region. We had a packed house in Sun Valley Auditorium, and I talked to parents of performers from schools all across the region, elementary and middle schools, grades five through six. We hosted the PMEA Delco Band Fest in our newly renovated Sun Valley High School Auditorium. 14 from Pendelco alone were selected to participate in that regional competition. So they're in our building all day long. Some of the other students, Sun Valley teachers may have seen some of the young kids in the building practicing, getting ready to perform that night, and was really proud to have people from the community and the region out at Sun Valley. We talk about our community arts. Here's all the nights where we have band concerts, we have Arts Alive, we have art shows at our elementary schools. Parents are certainly welcome to come out and enjoy that. I know our art teachers put a lot of time into having all the artwork hung out throughout the building, and I don't want to forget down in Tug, that music a lot, but let's not forget about the visual art teachers as well. Reading Olympics, incredible work, a lot of blue ribbons. That's the highest that you can get. Here's a wonderful team, Mastin there, superstar reader right at the top of the screen, in fact. Really impressed how well they did. They have to be able to read 40 to 50 books, these are elementary students, to prepare for Reading Olympics, and they brought home multiple blue and red ribbons. So very pleased for the academic piece. We had 6ABC on site today at the high school. Really impressive turnout by volunteers, first responders, book cable police, Aston Police, State Farm Insurance, funeral homes, Sun Valley Theater students. And it was an overwhelming event to see. Students at Sun Valley were able to see really a recreation of what would happen if a driver makes a bad decision and decides to drive impaired or text messaging and causes an accident. You can hear a pin drop when that occurs. And it's not lost on me how many people, adults from the community, were out, firefighters, EMTs, police officers, again, folks from funeral homes, adults playing a part in the mock crash, you know, the parent who learned of their child's death, unfortunately. Really impressive day. I mean, here's just some of the images. I think 6ABC will have something on their website where it's actually going to talk about how our kids prepared for the event. But when you see this, you know, this is what matters certainly a lot more than a state test, right? Is making sure that kids understand how important it is to be responsible when they're driving and the consequences that can happen if they make bad choices. And we're really pleased that we could post that important message for our students again. We continue to get up good news. I encourage everybody to really follow us on social media. We had a piece about the North Middle School Sea Perks Team, came back with awards because of that. We had a student who participated in the National History Day competition, was recognized as a winner for that. We had recently 43 members of the National Junior Honor Society adopted at Norkeley Middle School. And we also, again, recognize some classes that the Parkside Team at the Reading Olympics celebrated their blue ribbon. Last couple items, you know, generally, social media. The board's going to discuss participating in a class action suit that involves pursuing social media groups, companies that frankly have not done enough to assist school districts and other government agencies into keeping the negative effects of social media out of our schools. It is remarkably expensive to the taxpayer. It is remarkably time-consuming. It is remarkably challenging for students who are trying to navigate growing up in a life where social media can be so addictive and can also be so harmful. I just saw a headline today, the U.S. Surgeon General said that children's mental health is the crisis of our time, the crisis of our time. And he called out social media, and he called out cell phones for this. As a school district, we went into the field to be educators. We did not go into the field to be adjudicators and to be judges. Monday morning for principals is an awful time, very often, because they come back to work and they have to deal with the spillover of things that happened on social media outside of school at night, off school ramp. When we all went to school, we went home, and school was over. But now, because of social media, school continues 24/7, and students can never get away from one another. And it's too powerful. So a student can do something and say something and post something really inappropriate at 10 o'clock on a Saturday night. It has absolutely nothing to do with school, absolutely nothing to do with school. And let me tell you something, odds are, we're going to end up having to deal with it, even though we don't handle the issues. We don't handle what kids are doing when they're gone time. I recall what would happen in the past, a parent would walk down the street with their kid, you talk to the other mom, you have two moms who get together, they work out the disagreement, you know, they say, why did this happen? The schools weren't asked to solve these problems that happen outside of school. So I'm really pleased that the board is willing to take this up, because misuse of social media, when it refers off-site and outside of school, is overwhelming our capacity to address these issues that don't occur at school. I want to congratulate our four elementary students who submitted a class essay on why the right to vote is important to me, and they will be traveling to United States District Court in Philadelphia on May 9 to get their award. So wonderful to have kids from Pendelco getting that really great award for essay writing in United States District Court. Maddy Teacher Appreciation Week coming up. Looking forward to that. Senior prom, we have half-days. We'll have a Young Authors Celebration at North Middle School, where students from around the county will come back. Half-day the day before Memorial Weekend, and then all buildings will be closed for Memorial Day on May 29. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Note six on tonight's agenda is announcements to the public. Tonight, we're going to take a vote on adding motion 10.21. This motion made all prior Pendelco school district to enter into an attorney-client fee contract with France Law Group, ALTC, 42 West Broad Street in San Diego, California.
The board's going to, excuse me, thank you, Dr. Stone. The board's going to take an action to determine whether they wish to vote to authorize the Pendelco school district to enter into an attorney-client fee contract with the France Law Group for the commencement of legal action against Meta Platforms Inc., Facebook Holdings Inc., Facebook Operations LLC, Meta Payments Inc., ByteDance Inc., Alphabet, XXVI Holdings Inc., Google LLC, and YouTube LLC. Said action shall be for the purpose of claiming money damages related to the school district costs related to the mental health crisis experienced by students in the district. The attorney-client fee contract shall provide a contingent fee of 25% of any recovery. Expenses needed to fund the litigation shall be advanced by the law firm and deducted from the recovery. The district shall not be responsible for any fees or cost reimbursements in the event there is no recovery in the action. That would be the motion that the board would vote on adding to the agenda, and then they would vote specifically on that item at the end, either in the consent agenda or at the end.
So I have a motion to add 10.21 to the agenda?
Second.
Questions or comments?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes up, will be added as 10.21. Any comments by members of the board? My apologies. Back to announcements for the public. Tonight, in accordance with Act 48, the board met executive session to discuss personal litigation matters. No items for board information. Any comments by members of the public on agenda items open? So we start on page two, numbers 10, 3, 4, and ends on page 5, references to Penn Delco Budget 2022 through 2023, Act 93 plans, Act PDPA agreement, PDEFPA agreement, PDSSPA agreement, SPA second, School Code Section 0108B. His administrative recommendation will approve all personnel and investors. Who read this motion?
Thank you.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, board will utilize a consent agenda for 10.03 through 10.21. They, board member wished to have, vote to pull to vote second. So I need a motion for to approve 10.03 through 10.21. Please note, all contracts and preparations, solicitations, bids are subject to review or solicitors. Go ahead, Miss Spence.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any comments by members of the public? Come from the podium, please state your name and address. Please hold three minutes.
My name's Kathy Finnegan, 4307 Mount Vernon Avenue, Brookhaven, PA. And the mother you just heard from, I would like to read a statement from her daughter. She does not feel competent enough to stand up here and read this herself, but I do believe you should hear her words. Anytime I entered that school, I feel lost. I feel like I'm entering a maze of monsters that are out to kill me, or perhaps I feel as though I'm inside that one magic trick. You know, the one that's like you're trapped in a box full of water and you're chained to the bottom, but instead of being able to escape, I'm stuck, unable to breathe. Every time I swim to the top, every time I extend my hand, something is thrown at me. Something grabs me from the bottom and drags me back down. I want to go back to school, 100%, but I am so, so scared. I feel like I will be physically harmed in that school. I feel so mentally drained every time I leave, and I dread every time I need to enter. Every time I try to ask for help, I either back down or the teacher acts like I'm just an idiot, even my special ed teacher. And the fact that I have been ignored for years really sucks. I feel like my opinion, my feelings, my emotions, my hard work just doesn't matter. And by work, I don't mean just schoolwork. I mean dragging myself in and out of this school every day. I mean fighting back against the bullies, and then I get in trouble or I'm the one who's talked to. About how I could change my approach. For example, the people who told me to kill myself, or the people who have said to me, oh, you have barcode arms, and then I say F off or something, I'm the one the teacher turns to talk to. Every day I am a victim of something new and different. It can range from something physical to something entirely mentally damaged. I have people throw trash at me. I am insulting, and people will sometimes grab me inappropriately. And every day in class, in class, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, on the bus, everywhere other kids bark at me, every single day. This child is barked at. I see this happen to other kids, not only me. I come home every day when something happens to other people, and I feel more sad for them than myself. One of my friends, Sue's name I won't use, attends one of my classes. Every single day, people yell at him, touch him, shout his name, and he gets in trouble for trying to stop them. Sometimes he raises his voice, and that is the only time the teacher gets involved. I have reoccurring dreams where I am killed, hit, kidnapped, stolen from. Rarely, these dreams have good endings. I deal with night terrors anytime I have a dream, and when it isn't a nightmare, it's either nothing or just no sleep. The only person, the only person involved in the school who has done anything to genuinely stand up for me is my bus driver. The bus driver. He talks to me, makes sure I'm caught up on my sleep, he recommends ways for me to fall asleep, and he talks to the other kids on the bus when they harass me, telling them to knock it off. So thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for being there for me and helping me feel safe. What this all comes down to is that I don't feel safe within my own school. My eighth grade year is supposed to be the happiest year ever, but I can't even go to school because the other kids want me dead. I can't go back, I can't get back the time that they have already taken from me, but hopefully you can fix it so I can finish the rest of this school year just like other kids.
For those who don't know, my name's Ed Montaluzzo. For those that do, you know I wouldn't be standing here if it wasn't good. So you just heard what's going on with my daughter.
Sorry, just your address.
4307 Mount Vernon, sorry. So you all heard what's going on with my kid, right? Sounds crazy, like there's no way that could possibly be happening in the school, right? It's sets. Pieces of paper that document everything were just handed to the solicitor that outlines not only how this started, but how after reporting this, it's an organized group effort to target and use terrorist threats, because if you read the language that's written all on the Discord page involving these group of kids who are targeting and organizing this effort, that's exactly what it is. This isn't the first time I've stood here. Unfortunately, the last time I did, you guys reduced my comments, which I'm pretty sure is a violation of the Sunshine Act, to two sentences, when I stood here to talk about the physical bullying that was taking place with my daughter in school. Came here, talked about all of it, two sentences is basically what got cut out of the video and what you guys put in. Not what I said, not what I talked about, just that I came and I had an issue and we talked about it. No details about it being a sexual assault with her being groped, no details about the fact that nothing was happening until I came here and went off. Because apparently in this school district, that is the only way that the administration starts forcing people to do their job.
First of all, you're not going to attack the administration in the public sector. It's right in our bylaws. If you'd like to address the board, that's fine.
Sure, that's, we're here to ask for help. And it's pretty cut and dry. I mean, I know we've talked before, I can't even get help on the landscaping near my house, and we've been dealing with that for years, but that's not even remotely close to being important. So if you go to the video on the YouTube page, again, you'll see that my comment is there, or that comment is there replacing what we had talked about. What the disclaimer doesn't tell you is that bullying and misconduct was also a sexual assault. Another kid groped my kid in school, it was reported, nothing happened. Again, we're getting, I'm coming full circle here, I lost where I was. Then she was beaten with a fallen tree branch by a group of boys on school property. She was slapped in the face during recess because she mentioned something about a video game. She was also choked, strangled, actually, in class by another student. And fortunately, these problems were eventually handled, okay? Now, disclaimer doesn't tell you that I spoke directly with Quarter Million Dollar Man about how scared I was to send my kid to med school back here.
Mr. Montaluzzo, please have a seat.
It's Montaluzzo.
Whatever it is, we're done. You're not going to address our superintendent that way. Your time at the podium.
That is how much he makes. It's $232,000 a year.
Your time at the podium is over.
That's fine. That doesn't mean I have to stop talking though, right? Does anybody want to see a copy of all the deleted tweets and the deleted stuff that our superintendent put out when students responded to him asking for help during the last school shooting episode? They asked for help, it was ignored. One student asked for help for her brother.
He only asked you to please require you to exit the room.
Excuse me. What are you two laughing at?
I'm laughing at the.
No, this is serious shit.
Yeah, I know it is.
And you two are sitting laughing.
Comments coming from the podium.
You got to tell the truth. You have to tell the truth.
Dude, it's still not laughable where my granddaughter's in trouble.
These are tweets that you deleted. These are tweets from students who reached out to you because they didn't feel safe and you deleted it. He has his own Twitter, he's F P D S D, super.
Oh, that your daughter?
No, this doesn't, what I'm saying is this is a culture problem. This is a culture of what is happening here. It starts at the top, goes all the way down. We have to go to school and beg this principal, beg this principal at Northland to do his job, and it's still not getting done.
So where's it starting?
That's not the experimental one, but thank you.
Any, let me see this shit.
Do you want to go first?
I wanted to say.
Sir, 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 yes, sir. Your language is inappropriate. Please, please refrain from profanity.
You got that. Jim Finnegan, grandfather, 4307 Mount Vernon, sat and watched your video. And I sat here and I was laughing, just like you two were just laughing, when you were talking about bullying, how we handled this. No, you don't. No, no, you, no, don't turn that on, I'm talking now. You're wrong, okay? You're wrong. You're not handling it. You have a sign here, safe and supportive schools. That's BS. I kept it quiet, BS, okay? You can talk the talk, but that's all BS. We want you to walk the walk. Defend not just her, but all the other kids. You want to take this back 30 years ago? Me and that lady there once sent our kids to Northland, 30 years ago, because of the culture. And it's been that way ever since. You guys don't want to hold anybody accountable, being a kid, a teacher, you won't hold the principal accountable for not doing his job. Is this what America's coming to? Don't do your job, we'll pay you anyway. Your budget's great, oh yeah, good. My kid's afraid to go to school. And you two sit there laughing, I'm like.
There's nothing to do with that.
No, this is a bad subject. This is a bad subject.
It's a terrible situation, we did not laugh at yourself.
You know what?
Didn't laugh at you or the situation, so.
What I can tell you is, what I can tell you is everyone sitting at this table has kids that go to the district, and I know what goes on in the schools. It is very minimal, okay?
Minimal.
Yes, and we do address every situation.
No, you haven't.
Here we go with the BS again.
I'll make the difference.
Well, if someone makes a death threat, they don't get expelled anymore. Dr. Kamika's words, they don't get expelled.
You know what?
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm leaving.
Okay. Sir, you had, because of the nature of the conversation and the importance to the parents, no one stopped anyone with a three-minute limit, everyone was allowed to speak. In situations like this, the district is unable to respond to, in a public setting, to the conversations and the accusations. The district significantly disagrees with many of the things and factual situations that have been said, and there are avenues for that to be worked out. They're worked out generally in private between the parents and the school district, as they indicated one of those meetings is coming up on Friday with an individual education plan. Every district has to balance out the individual needs of a child versus the needs of everyone else. It is oftentimes a difficult balance. It's oftentimes a balance that they hit the mark most of the time, and on occasions when they don't hit the mark, when there is a disagreement between an educational aspect that a parent specifically wants and an administration may not agree with. Doesn't mean the administration doesn't care for the child, means they don't agree with the method or the necessity that a parent feels. That's why there are third parties that come involved in terms of due process that make each individual accommodation. There are some things that are very frustrating to the district and to you, such as an inability to indicate, that indicate why they specifically disagree with you regarding a statement about pervasive bullying and things of that sort. The situation that Ms., I'm sorry, I don't recall your last name, the mother of the child who came up and set forth, that's heartbreaking. There's no question about it, that it's a heartbreaking situation. It will be dealt with pursuant to the things that, the way that it needs to be dealt with in a legal fashion and in, inside the structure that the law has set up. The public forum does not have an ability to truly discuss those issues. Certainly, everyone respects and knows how difficult it was for Ms. Finnegan to come up and speak about her child and about the difficulties her child is speaking about. So a lack of response does not indicate that the district doesn't care. The district's unable to respond specifically to each and every point that was made. And to indicate that there are, just like you would take issue with, or you took issue with some of the items, sir, in the video portraying good news, okay. There may not be a million percent good news every day, but there's not a million percent bad news every day either. You know, there's a balance that exists, there are, I don't want to say versions of events, but there are interpretations that have to get made and have to get, have to get balanced down.
You're right.
So we certainly understand the emotion and the passion that you have. But I would just, I would just say to you, you know, the district is in a, is in a tough spot at this point to be able to respond to comments in public on the air.
And how come, how come all these other school districts around the country, there's a mass shooting or something along them lines? If we would have known there was a threat, we could have did something about it. Well, guess what, people? She told you there was threats. She told you. The lady on the phone, the girl's aunt told her on the phone, there's evidence of this. We're giving, we're telling, no, don't tell, don't tell me about facts, because you can raise a hundred million dollars.
There was a threat assessment that was done.
You could raise a hundred million dollars.
And the man reported to law enforcement.
I still got my whatever minutes.
And they had, sir, you were over here three minutes.
I can't tell time, I'm retired, I'm old.
I understand.
All right, cut me a break.
There has been no time limits that have been placed on anybody here tonight due to the emotional aspect of things.
Then do something about it.
Okay.
Don't tell them, don't tell me we can't do anything about it.
Well, I didn't say we can't do anything about it. I said we can't discuss the details about it. So because it involves your grandchild, it involves other children in the district, it involves children that aren't in the district.
That threatens somebody's life.
Sir, there was a, it was reported to Brookhaven. Sir, there was a, it was reported to Brookhaven, PD, before it was reported to us.
Yes.
The threat assessment was done, and there was a contrary assessment that was made. That happens.
And then two weeks later, the same thing happened at Edinburgh, and they lost their stuff over it, didn't they? Yeah, 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 the school district, the school district did something about it. There was cops there, there was all helicopters, because they cared. You guys don't care. That's why I'm on.
It's just not their kid.
Let me drop the mic.
Judy Saunders, sixty-two East Chilton Road in Parkside, feel free to start that three-minute egg timer, I've been here before. Hi, Mr. Steinoff, I'm Dr. Steinoff. First, let me address this. When somebody's speaking to you passionately from this pulpit, this bully pulpit, if you're talking to each other and laughing, even if it's about golf scores.
I don't need to be, I don't, you don't need to address something that happened.
Even if it's about golf scores.
I don't need your theatrics.
It looks disrespectful.
If you have something to say, say it.
If I'm speaking, it looks disrespectful. I have two children who graduated from Pendelco School District. One graduated from Hofstra with honors, works at a nonprofit, the other one is a rising senior at GW. I am very proud of the work they did in this school district, but I can tell you that when the twenty-seven-year-old went into Northlake, one of her friends was being bullied mercilessly. And since that friend did not have a mother who was on the scene and a father and grandmother who worked all the time, they asked me to go in. And what this child was told was how to avoid being bullied. It wasn't anti-bullying. When I came here and spoke to you about it, you, you went, we have the best anti-bullying program ever. You didn't ever speak to the bully, you spoke to the victim. You told her what she needed to do, how to leave class early, how to take different hallways, how to dress appropriately. And I thought that was so disingenuous to your anti-bullying program, I was actually sickened. And I didn't hear another type of program like that until my daughter went to college, where she was pulled aside in honors college to be told how she was supposed to act every moment of every day so she didn't get raped on a college campus, how she was supposed to dress, how she was supposed to employ a buddy system, how she was never supposed to drink too much because boys are allowed to when they get raped, but girls have to always be watching. That is what your anti-bullying program is. If there's parents here who are crying out that their child needs help, and we're being told statistically that there's collateral damage, and that's okay because sometimes there's good news, and gosh darn it, when kids are in the balance, sometimes there's bad, you aren't doing your job. I've been here before, I've been here when we were going to ban books and rip down rainbow flags, where we were indoctrinating children to Satan by making them read Catcher in the Ruff. The school district is not doing better, it is doing considerably worse. We should be growing, we should be advancing. I don't want your Garrison Keillor type of old school, we're all going to talk over the washline, we'll hang up clothes in our single-family outcome, and talk about how kids shouldn't be on social media. The time is now and social media exists. So fix the problem with the tools you have in your toolbox, and do not decide that a child's life is collateral damage to the statistics you put up on a bulletin board. Thank you.
Tell members of the board, I would like to say that we do have an open seat on Pendelco School Board, if anyone would be interested, apply and send an application letter. We'll hold some open interviews, and then there'll be an appointment next study session, which will be May seventeenth at the Service Center, and next business meeting is seven thirty here at the Service Center.
I want, you know, for the board to be aware, we have thirty-three thousand four hundred eleven kids, not just, we care for everyone, there's nobody who goes into this field doesn't want our kids, we go into the helping profession for a reason. We want kids to have great education, we love the students who come through our doors in the same way we love our own kids. Tell our staff all the time, treat every student the way you would treat your own child. And that you're, as a person who's committed to the helping profession, that's what you I recognize the challenges that come along with parenting can be deep, can be difficult to deal with because you love your kid, but I'm not going to make things personal, right? We're just not going to do that. It's unfortunate that I don't have the opportunity, you know, to share the other side of the investigation, you know, that the district has done, to be able to refute information that was shared here tonight. I just can't, and I won't do it on a public forum, it's not fair to kids. But the board should be aware that if we were aware as an administration that something was not done, we would trust them. But what I see is administrators working weekends, responding to calls weekend nights, and wanting to do something, but recognizing that they can't solve things that happen outside of the school, and that's why we refer things to law enforcement. So when our local law enforcement tells us that they can't substantiate things that we hear about, we have to trust that the law enforcement, that police officers are telling us the truth, they're not lying to us. When police officers say, we have made a determination, not pressing charges, not a crime, we have to keep that in mind. But yet we still have to struggle with the outcome, which is that we have students or students who don't feel good, who feel terrible about that. So we can understand if there are factually things that are presented that are not correct, and at the same time recognize that we still have a hurt each other. So when that happens, we are going to have to help children who don't do well. So I heard from, I was happy to hear that Ms. Martin, Ms. McClure, the counselors, the teachers.
I did say that word.
Have all supported the child. That's important. I just want folks on that, I want their board particularly to understand. I was in Northlake today, and I saw a really good school, and I had the conference in Northlake, and I had the conference in Northlake, I had the conference in those councils, that they're going to do whatever they can. But I recognize that they can't control what students who aren't in our school district do, they can't control.
Control the ones that are in the school.
Should I go up, or can I just?
No, meaning, meaning go.
I just, I just feel like.
They're barking at them in school. They're throwing trash at her in school.
She should be expelled from the school, that's it, that's, that's it. Inconvenience there, kids.
I wanted, I wanted to share.
I'm just curious why she has to be inconvenienced and not the bully.
You're not addressing the stuff that happens in the school either.
Motion for a round.
Because I'll tell you what has happened to her.